Hi, I'm Matthew Warner and uh... I've never tried to record from multiple sources at once before in OBS Studio, but I'm gonna give it a try. Today, I'm going to be using the um... Rococo Smart Gloves along with the Sony Makopi Motion Capture System to um, reshoot um... A scene in my uh, short animated film, The Cryonic Pharaoh, which has taken an unbelievably long time to do by myself. Um... I'm working specifically on Scene 32 Shot 2. And um, I'll do a little insert of the script when I go back and edit this. Um... I'm sharing my screen where I have Rococo's studio going up here and I'm about to hook up the um... About to connect the Smart Gloves and put them into my anchor battery here and hopefully they will appear on the stage there. So, hopefully we'll see them come up here in a second. Here's one Smart Glove, that's my left hand. And... My right hand is... Connecting here in a second, there it is. And then I'm gonna turn on... Nope, not that. Where's my actor? There he is. There's me. And then I'm gonna drag my gloves into there. Oooh! Okay, so right now I don't have a body because I need to turn on the um... The Sony Makopi. The way that works is, we have all these um... Little kinda wristwatch looking things that I put in six places on my body. This is not as accurate as a system as the um... Rococo Smart Suit, which I hope to be getting soon, which puts sensors all over your body and then, when that thing streams into um, Rococo Studio, it's really, really cool. Um, anyway, so I got my battery going here for my gloves. I'm gonna put it into my little... Belly bag here. My little Uncle Grandpa belly bag. Okay, um... Alright, so... You can't see what I'm doing right now on my iPhone, but I am activating the um... The Makopi. Maybe I can uh... Show what's happening here, it says "Start Motion Capture". This is "Preparing to Connect". Boy, that's really terrible pointing that up to a webcam, I don't wanna do that. Just gonna confirm. I wanna turn on all these sensors in the case. Next. And now what it's gonna do is Bluetooth, six sensors to my phone, it's going "Connect, Connect, 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 Connect." And once it's all done with that... Let me scratch my head here. Um... Select your height. Oh... It doesn't like that because I didn't have... Didn't have these in. Now I'm putting the uh, the sensors all over the place here. This one goes on my hip. And... Put a belt on so I can... There we go. This one goes on my head. On the back of my head. On my left ankle. And my right ankle. Okay. I'm gonna do this again. The calibration. Connect it, confirm. Select my height. Start calibration. What I had to do there was step forward one step. Maybe I can get a better view on this camera here. You can see I have my Makopi man. Hi! The reset's still be working. Okay, so... Good, now I can wave. Hello there. I moved my legs. Moving's amazing. I'm scratching my glove. Okay, um... Now that I've done that... I'm gonna face this way so I can see the screen. Stand up straight. Okay. Um... Now the next thing that happens is I stream into my computer, I already have everything connected on a local Wi-Fi. So you can see a gray man there. So I'm gonna drag the Makopi out of my actor. And now I have full motion capture, just about. My hands are all messed up. So Makopi's gonna wanna... Not Makopi. Rococo wants to calibrate my hands, so I do this. Okay. So now everything looks cool.
Oh, hello. Hello.
Whoa! Okay. So, like I said, this body mocap ain't quite as accurate as the Rococo Smart Suit. But... It's good enough for uh, for me. So the last thing I gotta do is get my facial mocap going. And for this, I have a Rococo head rig, which is gonna hold my iPhone on my face and clip to the rails and it took a lot of experimentation to figure out the right place to clip them. Or um, two lav mics. Let me see if I can get them to go on here. One green. That one just popped off. Two green. Um... And the reason why I say it took a lot of experimentation was... The whole purpose of having these lav mics was so I wouldn't have to rely on the um... The built-in microphone on my iPhone 12. Because what was happening was that, you know, as I was acting, I was getting little breath pusses on the um... That microphone's always blowing directly into it. And um... This way I can have decent audio quality and the um... The mics are like directly in front of my face. Okay. So... None of this would've been possible if I didn't realize that um... I could run two apps at the same time on my iPhone. Can I drink? Okay. So what's happening is I got the Makopi Wi-Fi streaming into my computer where it's being captured in Rococo Studio. I have um... Actually, the Makopi's going into my iPhone, which is going into Rococo Studio because this is also on the same network. And then I have the gloves, which are Wi-Fi directly through my network into Rococo Studio. So the last thing I'm gonna do is get my screen to come back on here. And... I'm gonna turn on Live Link Face. And I need to slate my screen, I mean my scene. So that's Scene 32 Shot 2, Take 2. And then internally it's Take 1. I don't know if that's what you call... Bull or something? Except for movie directors day, say... Scene 32, Roll 2. I mean, I don't know what that means. Tape number 2? I mean, I'm just sort of revealing my ignorance here. Okay. 32 Shot 2, Take 2. I'm not gonna be wearing my glasses. So now that I've gone through all that BS, I have to actually act. So in this... Gerald has just opened a first... He's opening a first aid kit on the floor of the bathroom of the underground bunker. He's rooting around grabbing a scalpel and he's getting ready to slash his wrist. But then he doesn't. Um... And because then in the next shot, he stands up and he's standing in the mirror and he's holding the scalpel at his throat and... And so, it's kind of an attempted suicide. I mean, he just found out that he mass murdered over thirty people. Problem is that he doesn't remember doing it. I mean, he's been a cryogenic stasis for ten thousand years, I mean... Would you remember anything after ten thousand years? Okay. Okay, so rehearsal... I'm not going to... I could kneel down for this scene, just like he's doing it, but... It's not really necessary because I can just move the character down to the floor. It's mainly gonna be in his point of view. But I wanted to do the facial mocap as well, so I got my audio. I have to do the full body mocap because before I tried to just do the gloves and I created this weird John Carpenter creature, you know, my bones are all crossed and freaky when I dragged it into Unreal Engine. So um, that was no good. So uh... That's why I have to re-take this whole scene. Hello. La di da. See, look at this. My hands aren't going... I'm just gonna raise my hands and they're going way to the right here. Okay. Right hand, it's way out here in space, left hand, it's kind of in front of me. Okay. This is where I start to lose my cool, because nothing... Look at that, that doesn't look anything like my body pose. Son of a bitch. Anyways, that means... I'm gonna come back out to this and try to recalc... Recalculate Makopi. And... Communication with the sensors is unstable. Well, that's BS. Okay, so I'm gonna stop streaming. I'm gonna try to reset. Um... And I'm gonna recalibrate. Motion capture one. This is "Take a step forward." And I'll start. Right hand, left hand. Okay. And I'm gonna be back in the Live Link. Put my phone back here so I can capture my face. Recalibrate the gloves. Mm, la di da. Okay. Camera background here so I can tell what the heck I'm doing. Alright. Twenty, twenty minutes at least of setup to get all this crap working together. Okay. I have to actually act now, okay. Um... Just gonna open the thing, grab the scalpel. And what I can do... Is get my camera kinda about where the shot's gonna be. I may have a reverse shot. It's not gonna work at all. Okay. Never mind. Never mind. Do I have my... Lav mic's still working, yes.
Sound check.
Alright. Son of a bitch. Get all this going. Okay, we're gonna try to hit recorder at the same time. Alright. 32... 32 Shot 2, Take 2, Gerald. And action. Where is it? Cut. Alright, that was terrible. Okay. It's something, but it's terrible. Okay, so now I'm gonna do... Get out of this. We're gonna do another one. Record, record, come on. Alright. 32 Shot 2, Take 2, Take 2. Okay. It's down, I think I opened that thing too... Too fast. And... Action. Where is it? Cut. Oh, man. Whew, I actually made myself cry there. Alright, so... Now... Now for the fun part. I think that last one might be it. I'm just... That was pretty good, it was slower... Ah, okay. Put that on. Cut.
Oh, man.
Okay. I'm not worried about the facial, facial mocap. Yet a human animator does a great job with this shit. But this... This is where it's... I mean, Makopi's awesome, but it's not really meant for this. This is where I gotta get that Rococo Smart Suit. The gloves help. Look, my hands aren't even where... I'm gonna have to correct my left... Ah, shit, I'm gonna have to correct my left hand, move it out. So I kinda think of using the Makopi for this as just sort of like a rough, get things rough. Roughly where I need them to be, but uh... It's not pinpoint mocap accuracy. It's not the Coil Pro, for sure. Alright, well that's a recording session, I know that was very exciting. Um... Turn this off. And um, I'm gonna start to power down my shit and maybe once I get this whole scene laid in, I can um... Show you guys what it looks like. Alright, here I am with my sequencer on iRender, which I previously prepared on my laptop. And Gerald's picking up the scalpel and I see that I have a focus problem. I thought I'd fix this locally before I uploaded, but sometimes things get out of track. Look, I say "Act or Track", what the heck's going on here? I recently saw um, a YouTube video where I um, credit this guy and my credits that EXR DWAA Compression 16-bit is um... You get good quality, but um... The benefit, the bonus is that your frames are smaller than PNG. And um... I have other things in here to help me along, um... Let's see, is it deferred rendering that's helping me? Uh, no, anti-aliasing. I use these spatial and temporal sample counts and um... I use a bunch of uh, console variables to help me out as well. Screen percentage and depth of field quality and so forth. These are things I picked up from the Unreal Animation Fellowship course that I caught online. Um, and I, anyway... Another thing I didn't set correctly here is where I want this thing to render and I want this to render into this. Select Folder, Accept. Render. We will watch the magic happen. This is an opportunity where you can watch your render frame by frame and sometimes see issues. Let's see. Scene. Where is it? I totally had to correct the um... Where the hands were going, they were just clipping through the first aid kit angle of them. And then, right when it gets here, then I attached a um, I put a, and a constraint onto the scalpel so then it started following the hand bone naturally so I didn't have to key all the positions of the scalpel. And then I brought in this um, hand on the left and I didn't like the way that its mocap was looking, so I had a pose asset for um, a fist and then it starts to blend into the fist and then I had to position the hands in relation to each other because of the mocap. Did not do a great job of um, controlling that very precisely. So there's just a ton of little things you gotta do to get these recordings ready. And I, I'm sure it will be easier once I get the Rococo Smart Suit. But for now, I'm getting better with practice at doing it this way. It's like watching paint dry. I've learned not to render the audio at the same time. I mean, you can bring in an audio track into your sequencer and then render it out. But I have found that by the time the audio makes that trip, once it comes back out, the um, the volume is low for some reason. So, if you are going to render audio through a sequencer, my recommendation is just use it as a scrub track just for reference. Um, and then I go back and I get the original WAV file out of the uh, the iPhone because it sounds better and then I put that into my Film Editor and work with that. This iRender uh, machine is pretty cool. I'm um... It's an RTX 4090, which is kind of your state-of-the-art GPU at the moment. And uh, you know, I can't afford to have one RTX 4090 locally on my, my machine. Uh, I got a laptop for one. But uh... Maybe it's because I built this bunker set where all these scenes are taking place and they're not very well optimized. Um, and they crash. This thing crashes whenever I try to do it on my own machine now. So, that's why I've had to invest in renting time here on iRender. Well, here's all my EXR image files. Um... I can't really preview them like I could PNG in this view. So um... All I'm gonna do is uh... Bring it down to my Film Editor locally and then hope for the best. So now I can say I'm all done rendering and shut down the GPU because I get charged by the hour. And you can um, you can find your, you know, how you're burning up your points. Like, so this machine, this let, uh, session that I did just now um... It cost me four points and um... I'm getting charged fifteen points an hour. The last time I bought things, I spent $230 to buy 230 points and they gave me 115 bonus points. So this goes into this balance that gets eaten up at 15 points an hour. And I, I think I might have enough rendered points now that I'm not going to need to buy anymore. Um... But I don't know. Machine GPU is where you jack into the uh, remote machine and Transfer is where you move data back and forth um, in addition to that little screen you saw when I was moving onto the network drive. Um, so Upload and there's my, my download assets are coming here. And so I would just drag directly out of this onto my local machine. Here I am in my Film Editor. I used to think Adobe Premiere Pro was the uh, most complicated program I owned and uh... Then I got into um, Unreal Engine. So I've got my image sequence here. Import as image sequence. Bring it into Ben 32. Just rename that, it's 32 Shot 2. I got my timeline here. Make sure I'm patching to the correct timeline as well. Pull it in, oh... One thing I did wrong. It always bring, it always thinks it's at the wrong frame rate even though I exported at 24 FPS. So I need to fix that. 24 FPS. See if I can fit 32 too into here. Almost. Yeah, look at that. Now uh we see what's going on up here. Gerald has his uh man, that, that thing was awful. I had to reboot Premiere. Sometimes I gotta do that. See how this looks? Yeah. Cool. So, next thing I gotta do is find my audio. That is not it. 32 shot 1 take 2. Oh man. Where did I put it? I know why I don't have it. It's because I didn't import from the iPhone. So let's do that. Alright, here I am in Unreal Engine on my Capture Manager. Looking for my shot. 32 take, 32 shot 2 take 2. That's the one I want. So now I'm gonna import that. Now that I have it imported. Just ignore the man on the stage there. Uh... MetaHuman Performance. This is like my, my processor. Takes a second to come up. There he is. So figure out where I'm gonna process this from. Alright. 32 shot 2 take 2. Take 2. Okay. Down. I think I opened that thing too too fast. And action. Okay, I'm gonna set that as my end point. And there's all this stuff. Really good acting. Let's see here. And then it finishes somewhere around here. Cut. Okay. Right. Right about there. So I wanna process that stuff in the middle. Alright, it's done, so like I said, I don't know if I'm gonna have a reverse shot, but at least I have the asset now if I want it. Oh no shit, why did I hit that? God damn it. You know, I had to process it a second time because I accidentally hit process. Now that I have it, I export it. And it's gonna go to not that folder. Fuck is it? Oh. So it's been retargeted 32 2 take 2. Gerald's face. See what it looks like. This ball in the middle is just an experiment I've been using for uh focus. Just an invisible ball for the camera to track. Right now I'm gonna import it. It's way down here. But I gotta figure out what I gotta get out of it. Record, record. Alright. 32 shot 2 take 2. Take 2. Okay. He's down. I think I opened that thing too too fast. And action. So right about there. And somewhere down here. Cut. There. Then see how patch it there. Holy shit, that's a long one. Well we'll have to see how that looks. Let's go up here. I'll hit play. Alright, now you can see what I'm doing here. Better. See. Snap that back.
Rephrase question.
Oh yeah, rephrase que... Sorry, that's a that's the long, long scene. If we're gonna move you down here. Get over there. Get over there. It's like in that video game. Get over here. Here I decided to render the facial mocap after all. And I had so many crashes. Alright. Here I am on day 514 of this film production. That sounds bad, but you know, the funny part is that I'm not even kidding. You know, this started back in November 2022, thereabouts, early November, where I was like, you know what? I would like to make The Cryonic Pharaoh into an animated film on my own. How about I learn this program called Unreal Engine? And that was sort of my level of knowledge. And here I am in March of 2024. Still not there, you know, it's kind of mixed quality on the film, but um, you know, making progress. Yeah. Anyway, um, so speaking of suicide, let's get back to my suicide scene, semi-attempted suicide scene. I um was gonna do the uh, explore the reverse shot. I mean, don't need to waste the uh, the facial mocap. So that's what I'm gonna look into here. Imported my sequence. And reinterpret the footage. Should 24 frames per second? Not, not one frame per second. Oh, it's not going to let me. Come on now. 24. Oh, and it would help if I had my numlock key on 24. Alright. So my, my idea is that I'm gonna patch this to V2. And then attempt to intercut these two tracks. May not work. And then when I'm running OBS at the same time as Premiere Pro, things don't work all the time, but let's see. Okay. Well, that matches up pretty well. Wow. I may not even need to move that much. So let me see here. Let me start sobbing. Okay. Seemed like it matched. There they go. That matched. There was like a little sniff, uh exhale. That was just pure luck. Not bad. Okay, I need to decide. Since I'm not animating tears here. Okay, I've never done this before. Let me see. I'm gonna do that. And I'm gonna disable that part of it. So you actually got this. There you go. You know, and then there's like a little cutback to it. So the next scene, he stands up at the mirror and he holds the scalpel to his throat and then he decides not to act, actually not to kill himself. Um, this is a cheerful movie. Yeah. But, you know, it's fun. Um, anyway. So in the interest of helping other people, um, maybe. And what I'm figuring out here is that you really gotta have good record-keeping in a complex, long-term project like this. So um, I'm sure everyone does this a little bit differently, but the way it made uh sense for me was I listed every scene and shot over here, like scene 1, shot 1, scene 1, shot 2, scene 1, shot 3. Is described in my screenplay. Interior, exterior, which it's very traditional, probably wasn't necessary for me to note that. The set, because each one of these were different locations. With the exception of um, I mean, anything that's inside the bunker was all in one Unreal Engine project, but some of these things like bathroom um, or later on, there's some park sets, those are actually separate projects. Day, night, I mean, that's traditional to note that too, and I probably, doesn't really matter uh I guess for me. Maybe narratively it matters. Um body mocap, face mocap, dialogue, whether I've recorded dialogue, audio, those are all important. And this next column, dialogue altered. So since I'm doing every single part, um hey, since I'm doing every single part here, um, I need a way to believably alter my voice. And so far, I've been using this wonderful online tool called Altered Studio. It's paid, of course, and there's lots of online voice changers out there, but this one I have found to be the best. Um, so I have notes here where, you know, if it's TBD color, that means I, I still gotta go in there and do a little more work with that. Um, the sequencer, have I created the sequencer within Unreal Engine, which is the big, long process of importing all of this, all of this stuff? And then putting it onto a sequencer and doing control rig modifications and retargeting and, and stuff like that. Um, and then have I rendered it out from UE? Um, my bunker set is, I'm really using like 8K assets from Quixel Bridge, and I probably shouldn't, so it's not well optimized at all. It crashes my little laptop, which is why I gotta put everything on iRender to get access to the RTX 4090 GPUs. And sometimes it crashes it even there. So I maybe screwed up there. I mean, I don't have as many problems when I'm using the imported projects. And I get off the Unreal Marketplace, of course. And then when I've exported the sequence and I brought it into Adobe Premiere Pro, that's my, my rough cut. Um, you know, to be done. And basically, anything that has color on it is something I need to do at some point in the future, because I'm gonna go back and add sound effects. Figure out how I'm gonna do music, or if I need to get someone else to help me on that. Um, color correction and color grading, I know a little bit about those things, but I'm probably have to like teach and reteach myself those things. Um, so, you know, I'm making progress down here. And what you've seen me work on over the course of this whole video is uh basically scene 32 shot 2, and then 32A, which was my, my insert here. Um, why can't, where, where do my little formatting things go? Oh shit. Oh, there we go. So 32 2 normal. Okay, I'm done with it. Yay. So then I get the pleasure of um checking this off. And then put today's date. All done. Right? And then I'm planning on my next things. And this goes, this project goes on and on and on and on. Oh. It goes on a little farther and maybe just a little bit farther and a little bit farther. Oh, here we go. Down to scene 133. So this is gonna take me the rest of 2024 to do. Um but you can see, some of these things I've already done, some of these scenes I already shot out and wrapped these particular sets. Um, this had a lot to do when I was waiting for equipment, like I was waiting for Rakoko to shoot me my, uh, ship me my um headrig to hold my iPhone, so I would do other things. Um, as much as I could, working on different sets, sometimes take, took a month out to take a course on um Niagara Effects, record some um animation. Um, so it's a large learning process and I, I know that I am a complete lunatic for tackling something this huge as my first big learning project. I mean, would have been much happier to take a five-minute movie and, and do it and render it out and get the you know, the, the gratification for that, but no. I don't do anything halfway. So that's where I am. Um, I hope you found this video helpful. Uh, maybe inspiring, um I hope you learn a few things and um I'd welcome your notes to tell me how I'm doing everything wrong. Thank you.